Angie, can you hear us?
Yep, got you now, thank you.
So you're running the meeting, Jerry's not here today.
It's your phone. Let's skip it, we just lost. Okay. My son just took advantage of us being in a meeting to tell me he's gonna go play video games, but to tell you all hi.
Oh. Hey Dom.
Because with manners like that, I couldn't possibly yell at him no in front of all of you.
Alright, you're running the meeting Angie, so.
Oh, I am.
Yep. Can you see the agenda here as well?
Yes, got it. Okay, let's call it to order and do a roll call, please.
Trustee Robinson. Trustee Drew.
Here.
Trustee Saint Germaine.
Here.
Trustee Erps.
Here.
Trustee Pomponio.
Here. Thank you. Alright, let's do a flag salute. We've got the flag up in there still, right? Super. Is it over on the bulletin board still?
Behind, yep, see it now.
Okay, I have to do it from a different spot in my house. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, let me just, let's see, what did we add to the agenda?
I haven't added anything since I posted.
Perfect. Okay, so we just need a motion to approve.
I'll move we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Did we have any public input?
No ma'am.
Alrighty, let's get to it. Talk to us about the classroom build.
Hey, I'm Jerry Brownall, the architect here. We received one bid for $1,449,700. The alternate for the other two classrooms is $115,800. Obviously, they have more dollars in the base bid than they do for the build out of the other two classrooms. And they, we kinda, I talked to them yesterday about that, that they would have more. I talked to the other superintendent that was here this morning too with it. So, anyway, so that's quite a bit higher than our budget. It's $360 a square foot, which is way high. I think of what you'd expect for a project such as this.
What'd you say?
Yeah, way high.
It's way higher than what you'd expect. So, especially for the type of construction that we're proposing. Simple build that we indicate. Some of the things that are driving the costs are market conditions right now. Subcontractors and electricians, mechanical contractors, they can, and even the lumber bids, they're only, they're only give them like a two or three day window to accept.
Five.
Or five. You know, like, I think the electrical guys said they only get two days, you know, for their lighting packages and things like that. So, a couple of things that, we do have some options. We could go back. There's two options essentially. We could go and we could talk to quality contractors and see if there's, that, you know, if they could negotiate, that they'd be willing to negotiate with us. Things, you know, because we only have one bid, there's really, there's nobody that can really say anything about it. So, anybody can say anything, but still.
But couldn't we also decline all bids and start over?
That's, number two is to reject all bids.
Yeah.
You know, we could go, we could go through and retune our drawings a little bit. And possibly rebid, you know, say like November or something like that. Where things tend to be a little bit more settled in the bidding environment. It's usually a better time to bid than right now, so.
So they took off, this is what I was looking for, so $259,000 for materials.
Yeah.
So then, it's 1.2 just in labor?
Well, there's other materials involved too. There's concrete, there's concrete. I mean, we didn't, we basically were just talking about lumber primarily.
Yeah.
So, and that, that kinda throws a wrench in it too, when they start doing that, they, they start, it just, contractors get squirrely when you talk about doing that kinda stuff, so.
They sound like they're really doing lumber.
Yeah, quality. That's what I thought too Greg.
I don't know if that's the case. I think, I mean, they wouldn't have bid it and turned in if they didn't want the work. Cause they have to go through quite a bit of time to get the bid bond and everything else like that, so. And he knew where I was with it. I said, you know, $875,000 is what I would say was probably, you know, what he wanted to know a number to put for his bid bond or to get his numbers started. So, obviously, you know, they came in, you know, you, yeah, you can, they're gonna bid what it's gonna cost by the time they assemble all their numbers, so.
So I see handwritten on here, date of substantial completion was pushed out to December 30th.
Right, so they, they basically did a qualifier in their bid, so you have ample grounds, you know, it's too high, you got one bid. You have ample reasons to reject all, reject the bid and, and then rebid it later or do whatever you wanna do or negotiate with them if you want to.
Dr. Garrett, do you have that bid information in front of you? I don't have it.
Yeah, we just have it right here.
You just like text me a picture of it?
Yep.
So, I've been snooping around for materials, you know, and I don't have any.
I'm gonna send it in your email, I'm gonna scan it and send it to all board members.
Perfect, thanks.
I don't have any, any yes, we will do this yet, but we're certainly having conversations about it. And I think what I'd like to do is see if we could get a complete breakdown of all of the materials. And, and then go out to some key players and see if we can, what we can do on materials. And then re-advertise with an extended date and actual information about these materials of what we can and cannot get. What do you think about that?
Like I said, it does throw a red flag up with the contractors when they're bidding, when they see that, you know. Couple will mention that to me, so.
But if we come to the table that we have the materials, not, we're gonna, we're gonna look for the materials.
Right, and I did say that in our bid notes. I said, we're not asking you to do away with your markup or anything like that. It's just that we might be able to obtain these, so.
I feel like it really shouldn't be a concern to us whether or not it throws up a red flag to the contractors. Just because, you know, right now, we're at the mercy of the market, but that doesn't change our budget. So, I don't know that I'm overly concerned with how the contractors feel about that. I think that we have to do the very best with the resources that we have from the taxpayer dollars, not worry about what the contractor sees as a red flag. And if they're already saying it might go to December 15th anyways, us taking some time for due diligence. You know, I think that's just the right thing to do. Chris, I think you're dead on.
So a lot of things, you know, if we could tell them specifically what we're providing, I think that might help them in that, in terms of firming it up if we have that, so.
Yeah.
We haven't heard anything back yet from anybody.
No, I've had a couple of conversations, but no, you know, no commitment. Would it be possible to do a complete materials list?
It's, yeah. You mean like, what does that mean, like every nut and bolt?
Not every nut and bolt, but the big things. So the sheeting, so we did the lumber, the sheeting, the sheet rock, the metal, the metal, the concrete, yeah, yeah, the big items.
I could do a takeoff on the concrete for you.
Okay.
So.
Do we think we could get the other, the other, the materials, the rock, the siding, the?
The metal siding and stuff like that?
Yeah.
We could.
I mean, it would seem we should be able to, since, I mean, if a contractor's bidding this job, they should know that, what materials they're bidding for use on, so.
It's, it's true, you know, one thing, just one cautionary tale that I've had, when architects start doing contractor things like doing takeoffs and stuff like that. You show up with a pile of lumber and a pile of metal.
It's not right.
And they wanted 16 feet, not 14 feet, or, you know what I mean?
I think you got a good point.
I, I think.
So I have a contractor that's willing to sit down with me that is not interested in bidding the job. And so, if I had the full set of plans, sat down with him and went through and got a list, and then had you review it?
Yeah.
Was that?
I mean, I, we, I mean, it would be good to have two people look at it. I can certainly do that. I'm not unwilling to do it. I'm just saying, those are some of the risks.
Right.
Where I remember one time where we said, get this beam or get this such and such like that, and they said, well, we're not even doing the project anymore, so. We ended up with a beam and no, you know.
Oh, I see.
Or whatever. That was just one instance, you know.
So, how, how willing do you think they would be to renegotiate if you approached them that way?
I, I think it's worth a shot. I mean, they put a considerable amount of effort into doing this bid.
They're interested in doing it.
They're interested in doing the job.
But Jerry, there were contractors that I know did not bid because of the timeline that we established. And, and by, by just allowing this extension without advertising it to the broader contractor network, that, okay, we're okay now till just the end of December. I think we're hurting ourselves.
Yeah.
And I also think that actually.
Oh, yeah.
I think that we have to reopen if we're going to change the dates.
Yeah.
Because it's a diff, it's a different bid now. We're bidding for a different job if we're changing the dates.
Well, not necessarily. We do have a place in there for contractor qualifications, so they're all free to do that, and they're all free to bid this. So, everybody had an opportunity, and the other bidder had an opportunity too. I told them, I said, if you don't think you can do it by that date, put a bid qualification in, so.
Was that clear to everyone? Cause I?
There are only two.
There's only two.
Well, I know, but, but.
There's only two, so I talked to Mangum.
Right, but other guys that didn't come because of that, didn't even come to the pre-bid because of that.
I just think it's just a, it's just the market, everybody is so flush at work. I think that, that's, that's the bottom line right now.
So, buyer's market.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. Cause Keniston said if they had had more time, they would've taken a look at it, but they didn't even go because they didn't.
I really think if we're gonna change our dates, we should reopen the bid. Yes, they could put qualifications there, but we ought to reopen the bid if we're gonna change the dates. It fundamentally changes the job.
So we don't wanna be, Jerry, gotta do this job.
No.
It's very important. We're not, I don't wanna be running this job. I want Jerry.
Well, I, I just don't think it would be a big problem to come, to talk to them and just say, did you have a mistake in your bid where we can, we can get to yes? You know, in terms of awarding it, you know, but, you know, says, oh gosh, we had a, we ended up with a $300,000 or $400,000 bust or something like that. I don't know if that's, you know, you know, you don't know unless you ask, so.
Do we have the flexibility to open that negotiation and then close it if we can't get to a point?
You can, you can ask them, and if they don't qualify, you can reject the bid. You have that power no matter what.
And you can do that all in one. I mean, you could say, we reject it if they can't meet this, like right now, I mean, this meeting, you can do that. If they don't meet our terms. Which would be the, the number?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Or the timeframe, whatever. I mean, that's, it's up to you guys.
Sounds like the timeframe is not gonna, they're not gonna negotiate if they can't get their timeframe.
I don't know. You don't know, so.
He was talking at least on COVID.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the meeting.
In the pre-bid, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and we might've been, we might've had stars in our eyes thinking it's gonna be done.
Well, you gotta jump for it. You gotta start on that end, just like they're probably starting on the other end.
It's just trying to, you're stretching your range.
Well, I know, I mean, you know, the, you know, how optimistic are we about him, them getting down to the number we want? Probably not very optimistic. He's gonna cost off that much money.
Yeah.
So.
And, and we're not.
Maybe we at least, we should hope to come in closer on dates. They pushed it out four months.
Yeah. So.
I don't know. I'm not, I'm not super satisfied by this. I do think the more clarification and specificity that we can get when we put out for the bid. The better chance of getting what we want as far as response. Chris's idea for materials being ultra-specific. You know, if we wanna extend that timeline out, we figure out what is comfortable for us even as a starting point to negotiate the timeline. I just feel like, let's cast a more specific net.
Well, there, there was a lot of discussion at the pre-bid about that. And so, I mean, they knew what they were getting into. I don't think there was any opaqueness at all about it. I thought Jerry was really clear and everybody, we had a big discussion, so I don't think there was any lack of clarity.
No, I don't mean a lack of clarity. I'm just saying if we're comfortable accepting an end date four months later than what we initially put out, should we?
Well, that discussion came up a lot during.
Pre-bid. And if we, I mean, but the other thing is, like Chris is talking about, I think if we're gonna try to solicit more materials, that really ought to be a part of this process. So that she doesn't end up soliciting materials and support that isn't used by this contractor because it's not exactly what they wanted and we still end up paying top dollar.
That's the only thing really that's unclear is what materials are really available. We don't have anybody nailed down at this point.
Right, right.
We have to go with what the contractor is, has to deal with. He doesn't have anything nailed down there.
Well, he does. He's got the materials listed that he.
Yeah, I mean, he's got his materials listed, but he doesn't have anything nailed down that is a, is a contribution or something or a pre-bid.
No.
Right?
I'm not.
I, I think in light of that being pretty much over budget. I think the responsible thing to do for the stakeholders and taxpayers, if we're talking about the potential to solicit donated materials. And we're looking at the only bid we have that's way over our budget, I think that we at the very least have to see what we can get donated. And see how much we can bring that total down, or we're really just.
It's gonna, yeah.
I feel like for the sake of two to four weeks, if we're already talking about pushing the date out four months, what's another two to four weeks if it means that we can knock that total way down and get closer to our budget? I don't think it would be responsible not to try.
I, I think if you're gonna rebid it, I don't think I'd bid it in two or three weeks.
Right.
I would, I would, I would push, I would push it till, till.
Maybe the end of the year or so.
I think probably towards when they were gonna be done, to November or something like that.
Okay. Obviously, we're, we're in a position to where we're not gonna have it.
No.
We're not gonna be able to.
Yeah. That's fine, whatever you think. I just think that if we're coming in this much over budget and we haven't fully explored donated materials, that's, I just don't think that we should accept a bid. Until we have explored every option to bring that total down, especially since we're so far over budget and over our timeline. So that's where I stand.
Where did they go up significantly on? What was the big thing?
They don't have.
It's a lump sum.
It's just a lump sum.
Also, they didn't break it, it's not breaking down.
I do think that they have, they have more of the project front-loaded into the, into the, the bid. But even when you accept both of them, it's still an enormous amount of money.
Yeah.
Even with it combined with the additive, so.
It's a lot.
I mean, at best, you know, you're like $260,000, so you're still around 1.2, even if you got some donated materials, the best case scenario.
That's where you were.
Yeah, you're still.
What is our limit, about $800,000?
$890,000, right?
Yeah, we were shooting for what you had estimated.
Yeah.
And that's had a time, from the time that that went on.
So, so process-wise, I move that we respond to quality and ask if they can get to our projected cost. And if there's no way to get to the projected cost, then we reject the bid. Assess materials that we can solicit from regional businesses to drive, to drive the materials cost side down and re-advertise at a later date.
The, the, he gave two figures. One was a completed figure, the estimate, right, and your estimate to begin with.
Right.
And one was, was a partial figure, and I think the completed figure was around the $100,000 or so.
I think that was just for two classrooms.
Oh, really? I thought we went down to six something.
We might have, I can go look at it, oh, yeah.
I, I think we should get them to come down to that first figure. If they won't, do, do.
That's a lot of money to have to give up. I don't think that's gonna happen.
We need either, we can second this and then discuss, or we can let it die. But I need somebody to second it, so, let me know how you wanna go on the motion.
I'll second it, because I think we should discuss it with them.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that we respond to our sole bid with a request to get it down to our projected costs. If they're unable to do that, we reject the bid. Work actively to solicit donated materials and put the bid out again at a later date to be determined by the board. Further discussion.
Question, I guess. Were you looking at timeline as well, or are you just looking at dollars right now?
Dollars.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think timelines kinda irrelevant, right, at this point?
Cause once we start.
Yeah, the timeline's just been blown out of the water, so.
Just, just checking.
I think that we need to just be responsible with our funds, and this is half a million dollars over, so.
So what kind of timeline do we have for something like that? How long would they have to respond?
As far as?
To get whether, so we can say we're, that they can't do it.
Oh, I think we can probably arrive at that within a, you know, a day or, you know, something like that. I can, I can talk to him after the meeting or something like that.
I just wanna make sure with the, so we have that recorded, that we're having basically a deadline to what you're saying.
So can we just try to get a request or response by the end of this week?
Yes.
Does that work? Okay.
Meeting Monday night.
Right, and then we get, if we get it by the end of the week, then we can discuss it by Monday. Or for Monday, okay. So it's been moved, seconded, further discussed. That we ask our sole bidder to bring their costs down to meet our projected costs. If they can't do that, by the end of this week, we reject the bid, work to solicit donated materials, and put out for new bids at a later date to be determined by the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Nice.
Thank you so much. That was complicated. Thank you for walking us through that Jerry, I'm sorry.
Oh, no. So we jump right onto the action item, which is fine.
Sorry. I got excited.
No, that's okay.
We're just, I forgot, we're just in discussion.
We, we have the action, check it off.
Check it off, check it off. We've done our actions. Okay, now let's go, our second discussion item.
Yeah.
Uh, new hire schedule changes, what's going on?
Yeah, so we've added, throughout the district, we've added four FTEs at different schools. So I can walk through those real quickly and give you, I don't have all the final schedules, but I can give you a pretty rough idea of what they're doing. So Orfino Elementary School, we added an additional teacher for sixth grade due to our numbers, so that will help us there. Orfino Junior.
Is that our giant class?
It is a pretty good-sized class. I don't think it's a super giant, but it's, it was to the point where we were gonna have, I think, 32 or three kids per classroom for two teachers. You know, so that was gonna be pretty big handful.
Yeah.
The other piece of that was, at Orfino Junior High School, we're adding a science position that we did not have last year. We just didn't replace that because of COVID and those type of things. We had a lot of kids online, and so we had to move some personnel around and we, that really made us suffer. So basically, we ended up not offering some of our culinary arts, and we moved that person into science, and now we're gonna offer those back. So this opens up because there was a big demand for that. We also, so we're adding a science position to cover that portion of it. We added a CTE position at the high school, which is, right now, we're still working on the schedules, but especially if this individual is forestry and industry that is very localized for us. I mean, they, they have a big background in soliciting and making bonds and connections between community members and businesses in our school district. So, excited to have that person on board. And then at Timberline, we have a position that's gonna offer elected courses, that's gonna be in arts and Spanish. By the time we move people around, we're also gonna offer, we're looking at health occupations. So we've expanded our CT up there and a few other things, and I think that schedule's still in work, so.
Health hockey pitch.
Nice.
So, pre-nursing type classes. We have a new person that is certified, who can do that. And I think we'll share that with Orfino Junior Senior High School as well, do some things with that.
Super.
Those, those connections are all in the works. We don't have all the final schedules, but I know we have some things coming up.
There was something about the guy at, doing the CTE at Orfino Junior Senior High School that would be self-supported or something.
Yeah, he, so, a lot of what he's done in the past has been providing, you know, gathering grants and being able to be self-sufficient for those programs for, not just equipment or.
Oh, I see.
For his own salary and stuff as well.
Like in the past.
So we hope that connection not only connects for us, but kids and us as well.
Yeah, yeah, got you.
So those are some, some good builds, I think, for, you know, and we have the FTE capacity within our, what we allotted with our support units and all that, so.
And the, the science wasn't actually a new position. It was a refilling, replacement.
So the year prior, we, yeah, we shorted it one and moved people around just so we could get by with, because of the offerings and what happened with COVID and a lot, a lot of line stuff. So we found that when we pulled those culinary art things out, there was a need and a demand, so that's why we wanted to put those back in.
So I, I don't know if this is the time or not, but I got a, a question from a constituent in relationship to hiring, and I haven't looked at our hiring policy yet, and that's my plan. Related to certification or not.
So that was forwarded to me, so I spoke with Charity and she wanted me to pass along to you guys that the concern is not on this list. I did update this list from the new hire recommendations last week because they were coming through. We're trying to finish it related with the committees. So we'll discuss that on Monday. It'll be another group. Primarily what we want, and I talked to her just for a minute about that, is how we form our committees, committees, is probably something we need to discuss. And I'll have the principals prepped on that so they can, can help you with that as well on how we do that. That was probably where the primary concern came in, was how do we do that and how do we know about selecting? We always use a committee, and it's always, always consists of, you know, teachers or personnel and abilities, depending on the position, obviously.
Use a committee for hiring?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And they get through that process of, they generally, how it works is, you know, we'll get the applicants come in and Jessica has like a clearinghouse of all those people who apply. And then they can tap into them. So they tap into that, like they're applying for that, like the science position or whatever. They have that pool, well then we pull all that electronically, that committee does, and they sort through them inside of you based on all the qualifications and all that stuff, do the interview, and then they get through the process. So it's a, it's a very, I mean, it's a good process, but we do need to.
Yeah, I remembered that we had a committee process, but I didn't remember, and I have not read in detail all the policy around hiring and requirements of certification. So, if you could point me in that policy so I could.
And really, we, we look at, you know, obviously the best person, the best fit for that position, and a lot of times there's things behind the scenes that we don't see as far as where they're at on their certification. Just because they're not certified at that particular time, they could be by the time we start school, or they're in program, or it could start to be similar. That's the alternative authorization thing that we do every year, so.
And I, I think too, Dr. Garrett, for us non-education people, would you mind just explaining alternative certification a little bit for us? Because I think that sometimes the perception is, oh, we just hired a biologist to teach biology, but they're not a teacher. They're actively working to be certified as a teacher.
We understand it. We don't need to explain it. It was just covered in a meeting that we were.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't. Yeah, we don't need it.
So, and I'll just say this, when I first started here, I think we'd had a year that we had thirteen people on alternative authorizations, thirteen teachers. This last year, this current semester we just ended, we didn't have any, everybody finished everything. So, we're starting back when you're adding more people, it's, our pools are not particularly deep a lot of times. There's not a lot of volume there, so, you know, you have to take the best person to go to the best.
And there are specifications under the alternative certification of where you have to be and what you have.
They have to continue to meet criteria and that, so you have.
To be fair, it's, it's people that are already, yeah, um, qualified and educated and are getting another career education, I think it's commendable, and that's, I believe it's how you started teaching, wasn't it, Dr. Garrett?
Right, there's a lot of, I was gonna say this before you said that, I was, I was gonna say, we have a lot of people who went through the alternative authorization program that are
You bring a wealth of another career path with you.
Well, and even to people that are income-dependent and need, you give somebody in their last year of college, yeah.
You know, and it, it's one of those things that when you're in a rural district, you're not always gonna have lowly certified people on every single position all the time.
Yeah.
We work towards that, we strive towards that, but it doesn't always work that way, I, you know, I've never had a year where we didn't have somebody in alternative authorization anywhere.
And I'm assuming when it comes, when it comes to approving the new hires and that we'll know who's on that alternative.
Well, we'll do in October, in October, we have to, by October, we have to approve them all by the board, so we hire, then you have to approve the program, the application once we go through, so.
And I'm not exactly sure of that concern that was brought to our attention, if that was, if it was the alternative certifications that they were concerned about, or was it the?
I haven't heard any more details other than that email, so.
Yeah, because I had seen some stuff floating around in the media about just.
I got cornered in the grocery store.
Well, if you guys have more details on that, we'll discuss it over the Monday night.
And they've done that.
I know, but I feel like we're really lucky to get some of the people that we have and the experience and education that they have, and it, I don't want us to discount the contribution to our district.
Well, one thing you guys have to remember as a board, you, you know, we put people in place to trust their hiring and what they need in the buildings, and that's what, you know, when I, if I have a concern, my comments are right to that principal and say, you know, I have to ask, what are you thinking? What were you doing? You know, tell me, walk me through this, and I have to trust that, but I also want justification. So that's what I would expect you guys to want as well, is the same type of thing, so if you have a question, we can definitely have those conversations, but about particular individuals or whatever, we have to do that in executive, obviously, so we can certainly do that Monday night. So. Good comments, questions?
Okay, so, since I already, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead to G, so we're halfway done there. We need a motion to approve the new hires and recognize the separations.
Well, I would move that we approve the new hires and, and, uh, and recognize the separations.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the new hires, recognize the separations and retirements, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Alrighty, what else do we have?
That's it.
Any board member inputs?
Next Monday night, next Monday night, next meeting, can't imagine another meeting next week. I'm gonna add up how many we've done this year, from June.
I recently heard a rumor that, um, that school board members are paid, and I just wanted to address that with the number of meetings we've done this year, I'm really dissatisfied with my period of zero. I'm gonna need to get, I like a person, you know, like what's, what's ten times zero, cause that's what I'm, for a raise this year.
Yeah, exactly.
I know, and if we're all coming back to in-person, I really feel like we need to revisit the snacks that we had talked about before COVID at meetings, cause that the pandemic really messed up. So.
You're in charge, since you brought it up, you're in charge.
I'm in charge, I'll bring snacks Monday, cause I actually should be able to make it in person and, um, we're, we're just a week away from everyone in the house being fully vaccinated, so.
We are, Orfino Elementary School, that's, we're doing a work session at five thirty.
Oh, yeah.
In the library. Library, and then six thirty we'll have a meeting.
So does, I mean, you're expecting like a full meal, or is a snack fine?
Oh, two or three courses.
Are we gonna put on the agenda to, we're gonna be making a decision on this, or is this just gonna be something?
Well, it sounds like, we'll, we'll discuss it, I mean, the action's already taken place, if, if we can't meet that price by this week, then it's automatically rejected. Not how we have it worded, right?
Put it on the agenda.
And if there's something more we can action with, we'll definitely put it on there, so.
No, I know, poor Jerry, how much is he getting paid to come to all these meetings, cause now he's at all of them.
We're probably paying him.
On a school board pay rate, that's not fair.
We all are, trust me.
Oh my gosh, right, okay, thank you all so much for doing this in the middle of the day, and we'll see you all Monday, and that's the end of that.
Sounds good, see you, thank you.
Have a good afternoon.